...
A lot of vehicles driving around with that flag. And it makes me wonder whether or not, how are these things attached? You know, shifting loose loads is not legal. And am I to expect that that's going to come loose and be a javelin, you know, propelled at how many miles an hour? And this past week, I saw a small pickup truck with what appeared to me to be four students, two in the cab and two in the bed of the truck. And it's been a while since I've had children that are newly minted drivers. But I thought that there was also some restrictions on new drivers about how many people of a certain age, you know, the driver could have with them. You had to be a certain age before you could have teenagers with you. So, and I even looked at the vehicle and wondered had it really passed inspection? So, it made me feel threatened on many different levels. And so again, I know that Christiansburg Town Council can't do anything other than have dialogue with your elected peers that have responsibility for the school. But there are impacts to our community. And there are going to be demands placed on our police department to respond to this. But I think that some of the behavior of the kids might be something that the police could have dialogue with and check out and make sure that they're traveling legally. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else still address council? Here we go. I'll close the citizens' hearing. We'll move into staff reports we have done tonight. Next on the agenda is discussion by mayor and council members, council action on a conditional use permit request for planned housing development in the R3 multi-family residential district. This matter is a carryover item from September the 8th, 2015. The public hearing was held August 25th, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the town council approve the conditional use permit application of statesman homes, including the condition set forth in the resolution of the Christiansburg Planning Commission recommending approval of the CUP. And also include the voluntary self-imposed condition offered by the applicant to contribute 25% of the cost of designing and installing a traffic signal at the intersection of Quinn W Stewart Boulevard and Pepper's Ferry Road payable to the town specifically for such purpose prior to the first building permit been issued for the property subject to the CUP.
I would second that.
Go ahead. We'll give a second.
Yes, sir.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Helms, the staff undertook, since we decided to table this last time, to look into and examine the Stafford Drive area, which would be, I guess, we'll say, traffic tensions to be exacerbated by virtue of this particular development. And I think you've already mentioned to me there's about 900 feet of stretch of road. And if the staff could come up with any recommendations or reports pursuant to that charge?
Sorry.
Hope that you...
The engineering staff looked at it and their recommendation was a pavement 18 feet wide, it's in generally good condition. The traffic was averaged 1,233 vehicles a day with peak hour 150 vehicles an hour. They, their recommendations or their thoughts are sufficient revenue exists to support existing level of service and the anticipated increase due to planning housing development. Once the traffic signal on Quinn W Stewart Boulevard is installed, the traffic volume should decrease due to the availability of a signalized intersection. Use of Quinn W Stewart intersection should, yeah, Quinn W Stewart intersection should be encouraged regardless of what lights there or not.
So, the town staff that looked into this, and that was Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
They felt as if the current conditions were suitable and appropriate if this was approved, is that right? And what Mr. Van Hoosier mentioned about the 25%, the very, a lot of the generosity that was being offered by the developer to help to establish that signal light there at Quinn Stewart. My understanding, and for the people in the audience, we would not issue the first occupancy, I guess, permit, if you will, or that's not the right...
First building.
I'm sorry, building permit, sorry, until a time in which that signal light was established. Is that correct?
Until they pay their...
Their 25%. And that's what I wanted, and that's what I want to make sure there's no misconceptions on. The building permit, once they basically deposit with, if you will, the 25%, and do we know the total cost?
It's not yet.
We have an approximation, $700,000 total for that signal light.
Probably a little bit less than that.
Okay. So, they'll deposit the 25% into the town for purposes earmarked for that, that signal light. Do you have any ideas to when the, and again, I'm asking you to speculate again, I apologize in advance, the signal light, when it is constructed or starting to be constructed? How far, I guess, in between the development of the property and utilization of property till that signal light is up and running? In other words, are we going to see an issue where there's people living there, increased traffic before that stop, that traffic light is approved and actually built?
There'll probably be two years before they start building.
This is the developer?
The developer.
Correct.
Also, we are putting in application for revenue sharing money this year.
Absolutely.
So, if we get the funding, it could be in before the first house is built. But it all depends on whether we get the grant.
And we're talking about the plan, the complex, not just the house, but the, we're talking about the complex and stuff that would be built, correct?
The apartment complex.
Apartment complex, right, right. Okay. And that, again, my question was just if we, if there's going to be a large, basically a stretch of time where that would be inhabited and people utilizing section of Stafford and Quinn Stewart without the stoplight. But my understanding from you directly then is that likely that's not going to be the case at all?
It's feasible it will be, but it's not probable.
Okay. Does that...
Depending on the budget, not let the staff...
Does that play into the report from the staff that prior to the development of that stoplight, that if in fact that property is being utilized for the intended purpose pursuant to the CUP, that they would still stand by it's not a traffic issue or a traffic concern?
Yes.
Okay. That's why I didn't know. And one last thing, and something that Mr. Stipes had mentioned, I think, maybe in the street committee meeting, but the, there's a trail that extends out from the Quinn Stewart intersection with Stafford that pedestrians could use and is accessible and to the public, correct?
Yes, it goes all the way down Quinn Stewart Boulevard from one end to the other.
Okay. Well, like, and just one more thing I'll mention, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be quiet on this, but we know the developer is a class act. There's never been a question of that. It's all about the pedestrian and friendly access and being safe for bicycles and pedestrian access accessibility. And that's why we requested this to be stayed for the town staff to study it. And I appreciate, I pretty very appreciate that with the work they've done, and therefore I look forward to supporting the request this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I want to, even, I did a second, and I think was a good second, and I believe in what Steve Semonis and his, that they're going to do. One thing I was thinking about when he was here before, I believe he said, "We will pay up to $175,000 or 25%." Was that right, Mr. Semonis? Do we need to put that, like, in, in this provision? That was the maximum? That was...
It's in here, they will pay 25%.
Up to a max of 175. Yes, sir.
We had that in the signed proffer from last week.
Yes, in the signed proffer.
So, we've got it in writing.
Okay. So, I think, I mean, if it's more than, 25% is more than 175, then he is, they're, that's all they're going to pay is 175.
Correct. But anticipating 25% is going to be more like 150,000.
My concerns have been addressed. I was one who recommended that we table this and take a breath and study a little bit more about Stafford Drive. But between the information Mr. Semonis provided and our staff, my concerns are satisfied here. I think there is bicycle pedestrian connectivity in the short term, and I think in the long term, there will be improvements to Stafford Drive necessitated by the development of the, the Haverstaff property. They're here to son the corner of his own business. So, I likewise look forward to supporting this motion.
And it shouldn't be understated that Bill and Pepper's Ferry were on board with this. They had meetings with the developers as well, and the developer took the time to go out and speak with them. And that also, I think, bodes very well for, yes, that's their community cooperative, if you will. And so, again, I think of the council, we all appreciate that.
Very good. Anything else? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
We've got these six O. We got very...
We're getting a ringing.
Does that? Can you hear me okay back there? I woke you up when I did that little buzzy thing. Next on the agenda is a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report known as CAPER, Public Carrier Care, September 8th, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the CAPER as presented, that we would approve it as a council.
Second, ma'am. Motion to second. Any discussion?
I think Nicole played a large role in this, and I know she's probably, I'm sorry to say it's carpal tunnel after having you and done all that, but I appreciate their effort as a large document to review.
Thank you. Madam Clark? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any other questions, comments? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
It would be six O. Thank you very much. This third item, request from Montgomery County, by Montgomery County for a boundary line adjustment on Sinebar Road.
I move that we grant the county's request for the boundary line adjustment.
Second.
This will have to go to the courts.
Yeah. But it can't do that unless we approve the grant. There you go. Any other comments or questions?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I don't mean...
Yes, you do.
I don't mean to be comical, but I guess as a council, if we don't approve that, can they still go forward with that multimillion dollar pet project?
Mm-hmm.
I guess we'll just go and approve.
Yeah, we better go. Madam Clark, would you call overall please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
It would be six O.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Better than the others.
Well, we're paying for it.
Oh, yeah, they're going to be in trouble later down. Next is on the discussion by council, and the mayor is, council must set personal property tax relief percentage at 38% as required by the Personal Property Tax Relief Act. Council must set this personal property relief percentage each year. Ms. Helms, this is not new to us, is it?
No, sir. Ever since the war, car tax, got a governor elected, we now, each year, we have to state set amount that they're going to reimburse us for personal property tax relief. And as the values of vehicles go up, that becomes a smaller and smaller percentage of overall tax relief. So, each year, we have, we have to calculate it, and this year it'll be 38%. So, that's why we have to do this each, essentially change the tax rate each year.
Does the county do the same thing?
Yes. Every locality that has personal property tax has to do it.
Make a motion, we reset the tax rate at 38% as presented.
Second. Motion to second. Any comments or questions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir.
Could you please call overall?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
It would be six O, is that correct? Very good. Of course, we won 24 to nothing in the night. Thank you. Is council discussion need for a grant rider? Mr. Shawalter, I believe you had asked in a previous meeting that we do this?
Yes, I did ask for this to be on the agenda, but I do want to put out there that this, like our discussion with the farmer's market in the past, I mean, we have to have a discussion. Seems like every committee I've been on with the town, and I would assume everyone else here, there's always a discussion about grants, and there's always disagreements about what's out there and how much money's out there, and there's always something being thrown around, "Well, we can do it with a grant," but nothing ever seems to be done. And then we hear from individuals who either work in other communities or have been to their municipalities that, hey, they have a grant writer on staff and they can do all these things. And it seems like everything, every project or plan we sort of go forward with, and in my email, they got this on the agenda, it was no slight against our staff. When we inquire about something, our staff diligently looks into it. But my question is for this council, is this something we would like to pursue forward with possibly a cross train of a current employee or putting somebody on staff? Or this is to get the conversation started because we are the Central Business District Committee, which is newly formed. The farmer's market will fall underneath that. There is a committee for that right now, and there's many, many other projects that we have out there that were sort of kicked around. Is this something we need, a staff position, we need to advise us, yes, this is out there, no, this is not available to you, instead of it being sort of a loof like it is every time until we get to a point where either we have the money or we don't have the money, are projects grounded because we had bad information going into meetings, thinking that we're going to get these grants or matches and things like that? So, it's, I'll put it on the agenda to start the conversation, maybe even to give some direction on how we want to pursue. It's all in there and let the council jump in.
I'd like the council to bring it up and discuss it because we have kicked it around many times about grant writers and so forth. I'd like to see the stamp, and the stamp needs to bury, I'm not sure, do a little survey of some of the surrounding localities and see how they handle it. Do they have a dedicated grant writer or either a cross train, like you say? And get a feel from them of what they think their return is based on their expenditure to fund the grant writer and see how we can do it. I know in the past, particularly in traffic things, we've used some of the companies around, such as Bosner or Gay and Neal and stuff like that, but there may be a more efficient way of doing it. So, if we could explore that a little further, I'd like to see more dialogue in the future on the whole thing and see what we need to do.
You know, I think that's a good point. I mean, grants are out there, there's money out there to be acquired in different areas. And I know we on council and the staff probably hates to see these grants go by and this money go by, and it would be good if we had someone, a cross train is a good idea, that could keep up on this maybe and work on it and get some of this revenue.
I'll tell you, there's a, frankly, there's a grant for just about every conceivable purpose you can, in your, in your mind, and a lot of times two and three types. But Henry, I appreciate you bringing this up as well. I think Jim's hit the nail on the head. I think it's nice to know what other localities are doing. That being the case, it's, a grant writer I'm sure can be worth their weight in gold as well. I know that some of them, depending on whether it's a true grant or if it's a matching grant, and we've used them for many, many different purposes, but the one thing that always kind of struck me was not only are they available or how many are available, there's such a multitude that it'd be nice to have someone who is trained specifically on that, who can fit the project for the particular grant. But also because a lot of them are cyclical, they are here for six months, and then they're gone for two years, and they're back for nine months, and they're gone for three years. And I always go back to like the FDA and USDA grants for the farmer's markets, and some other localities paid for their farmer's market with a non-matching $70,000 grant. I understand there's other things that go into that, but Galax and some others were able to tap into that for free of charge to do something for the community. That right there would pretty much pay for the position in a year, I would think, if someone could get access to that particular grant. But I think it's something as we grow as a town, I would think, in a locality our size with our budget as well, and the amount of projects that we have open, I cannot see how it would not benefit us and benefit our taxpayers as well. So, again, I'm all for what Jim mentioned for having buried, Mr. Helms, you look into that, but I think it's something that we should very, I think we should really consider it as a council. I would agree.
I'd like to add, Mr. Shawalter presently sits on the New River Valley Regional Commission, used to be the Planning District Commission, and I was on that for almost 10 years. Their expertise is grant writing. They are already a resource force, and I think we need to do something. We need to be more aggressive, and it may be that we end up hiring somebody to do this or, you know, have a dual position or something like this. But as part of, as part of Mr. Helms' investigation of this, I would also request that you reach out to Kevin Byrd and ask him if there's something more, if there's a possibility of a more active role by him and his staff, because the other, they're excellent grant writers, first of all, you know that because you're listening to things that are happening. But I do know that we can sort of hire them to write grants for us for a bargain basement price, and they know where the money is and they know how to write the grants. So, as part of your investigation, you know, give us some choices, and that would be one other choice, because they could, they would be, I believe that they'd be happy to take a more active role with us, especially if we're going to be giving them maybe extra money to write grants for us, you know what I'm saying? Because they take our money and then they multiply it by nine times more for their own programs. But as part of that, I'd like that to be part of that assessment as well.
And we have used them, but not a lot.
We have used them, but, and Mr. Shawalter has heard him say too, on an annual basis, we can hire them for a lot less than it might take a staff position for a year, just guessing we'd be in the $50,000 to $75,000 a year range to hire a staff member full-time to do that even if, but just, I've said enough, but I'd like that to be part of our look, see it test.
Great idea. Yeah, I think that when you get into a grant writing situation or something that we're pursuing, it takes valuable time away from the department heads and other members of that department can out, can be doing other projects within town. And I think part of the, part of the process that I would envision is being able to know, I mean, yeah, there's grants out there for this, however, you got to do this before you can do that and apply for the grant. So, it's helping to identify the grants and the terms of the grants as well as writing them. So, I think that the Regional Commission has done a nice job and everything. They've, they've touched for us in master plans and everything else. It might be a good opportunity to sit down with Kevin and his group just to see. So, I think it's, it's good that this has come before council. A good grant writer can pay their own salary just about because most all of them have administrative fees for doing that. So, that being said, I, Ms. Helms, if you would, I know we've got a pretty busy first part of the month, but maybe you and I can, and Randy can meet in the morning or, and talk just general ideas and settle game plan. Is that all right with fellow council?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, and just for instance, some of the people in the audience, if I could ask a question of Mr. Helms on this point, but last year, Mr. Nelson, like you just mentioned, we've used some valuable staff time to do this, he was instrumental. And what was the amount of grants that we received as a town last year just for our stormwater management and our fees and things going forward? The amount that blew me away.
About 1.7 million, I think.
I believe so.
We're going to turn one down so we can have enough match for it.
Right. This is a minimum of $1 billion in money we were able to acquire.
You know, it's something we need to pursue, but I know that right now the staff is going through some rather intense procedures and so forth, implementing our new review policy and those type of things. And it takes a little time to do it. We need to take the time to do that and then go on with this other, looking into the grant.
Ms. Helms, you have a date at this point that would be comfortable that we could at least come back and report and looking...
Would you, the first meeting in November?
First. First meeting in November? Is that good?
I assume it's going to be a budget item, so.
Yeah, probably a good idea.
I think it's all crossed our minds all the time, but with VML coming up and what Jim mentioned, I would assume that that would be perfect timing.
Well, I would challenge council, I would challenge council, I would ask council, because most of us are going to the VML conference, and it is an excellent opportunity to network with not only the larger cities, but the towns our size and smaller to, if you, if you get a chance in casual conversation or direct conversation, inquire as to what they do, in some kind of general idea. So, you know, we're going for three days, two days, and I think there's always a wealth of information that can come out, and if we go down with that target, maybe we can come up with something. All right? Street committee recommendation and report, Councilman Stipes, Councilman Van Hoosier, boundary line relocation plat in Cambria Crossing LLC containing five lots located on Dugoff Lane Northwest.
It's supposed to get out of there. It's a fairly straightforward request before you, this evening, the street committee has took it and has taken up, and it involves some adjustment of several lot lines on the plat presented in front of you in Cambria Crossing. We've had, we had some actions two weeks ago on the Cambria Crossing request, and this one is slightly different and it's, it's relatively uneventful. There are some lot lines on Lot 96 and 97. Actually, all of them have some slight adjustment, and the street committee saw no reason to not approve the request. It conforms with our subdivision ordinance and our zoning ordinance, and there are five lots today, there will be five lots if we, if council approves this. They're just slightly tweaked, especially lots 96 and 97. All of the built, none of the lots is, none of the lots has, presently has a house on it. There is an existing footer on Lot 98, and as I said, it's relatively uneventful. The street committee recommends approval of the plat as presented, and will make the recommendation in form of a motion.
I'll second it. Motion to second. Any further discussion? Shaw, you're very good at it. Let's see if we can get 30 statements.
Yeah. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
It would be six A. We'll get escorted on. Council reports. Who feels lucky wants to stop?
I'm paying.
All right. Mr. Hall?
Sure. Couple of quick things. First and foremost, the, I'll say first and foremost, but the Recreation Commission meeting is going to be held the first Monday in October, and we'll be discussing some things about the Attruda Wilson property, some upcoming things in that regard as well. So, invite any members of the public to please attend. It's at the Recreation Center from 6 to 7 o'clock or 7:30, depending on how long-winded some of us might become.
11:30.
11:30. Might not be that late. But on a more serious note, the, Mayor, I want to thank you for being there tonight for the subset of the next girl. It hits close to home to me. A lot of you out in the public were there as well. I thought it was a fantastic event, and I love it because the young people pretty much put it on. I think that always means a lot to me. It kind of brings it home to me. My daughter is a member at the high school, and I just thought that the way they, it's just a very well-run event and excellent for the young people to kind of see that adults are, care about them, take this and run with it. Martin, I appreciate you being there from the press as well, and the news was there. So, again, I think any press that these individuals get for their hard work and effort, I think it's returned in spades basically to them. And the membership up there, it's young men and young women both playing a role together, and really their, their main message, in my opinion, is just about being vigilant. Again, as a parent of a 16 and a half-year-old young lady, that strikes very close to home with me. A child is looking at a college in a couple of years, so I don't want to turn this into a personal message, but I'm a very big believer in that organization. There's people that are members of that organization, and the, and the leadership at the top, I think, the things, as I say in some ancient texts, the fish kind of rots from the head down. Well, it also eats from, starting from the head as well. And these are excellent people at the top end with, with, Mike, I'm forgetting your, Kenny, with Kenny and with the Harringtons, it's just a, it's just a fantastically done organization and group, and it's spreading like wildfire. So, I would just tell any members of the public, any ways you want to get involved, try to support these young people in what they're doing and spreading their message. You won't be, you really won't be let down whatsoever by their passion behind it. You, you won't be, you really won't be let down whatsoever by their passion behind it. So thank you all very much and the members over there tonight and those of you who were here tonight to spread the message that they were trying to spread. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bishop?
All right. I don't have anything from the rescue squad, however, I do have a correction concern and we were given a follow-up master list, list meeting. And I would like to see us hold some work sessions to get some of these things off the table because there's a lot of things that's been on here for a year or two years that needs some type of action. And I think we owe it to these citizens to respond back as soon as we can.
Mr. Helms and I talked about that earlier, or late last week, that we were going to sit down and, you know, going to go through the list and we'll get it updated even further. There's some of the things we think have been taken care of, but we'll get a more up-to-date list and have it back to you all by the next meeting. Mr. Hubbard?
Yeah, I wanted to say here of the Wilderness Trail this past weekend and the, you people did a tremendous job. I think they had probably the biggest crowd they've ever had and great weather and real, real asset to the town of Christiansburg. And the other thing I had to say is, has there been anything determined yet on the election signs? When they, have you had a chance to, to discuss that with anybody yet?
The planning commission and the planning board are looking at what we can do and Teresa's been brought in on it, so we're working on it. We're talking about the final decision on the, or final recommendation.
All right. I'll give you a brief help on that.
Mr. Showalter?
Oh, you're done. Sorry. I've got a few things. The Central Business District Advisory Board met again tonight. We're pretty much going to meet every week. For those of you in the audience who don't know what this board's about, it's for our traditional downtown Christiansburg and Cambria to advise on enhancement and re, well, I'm gonna say revitalization, but we took that out of our mission statement. But our mission statement was put together today. I think, I would, I would consider our, this is our first real official meeting, town staff.
Y'all were having some fun that meeting too. I heard a lot of laughs.
Well, me, we have, we have, so that's good.
That is good, that's real good.
It's a nice refresher than coming here. But, just kidding though. But it was our first real meeting. You're going to see some really good things come out of that. Mr. Bishop's part of that. We have several members out there right now, but it's really moving forward. Karen Drake and Tacey Doole is our coach here. And they took the bull by the horns tonight and really took over and we got started. We even had a little sort of brainstorming game tonight as well, not game, but, you know, to gain knowledge on what we want to accomplish. So, and Brad and Jim stopped by for a few minutes and got to witness it. So I think it's off to a great start. Just a couple of other things, Mayor. One of the things I'd like to see, it's always refreshing to me, as I was going to church Sunday the day after the Wilderness Trail, which was excellent, I saw one of our town employees downtown sort of just reviewing everything, going over downtown, making sure things are in place. And that means a lot to me. A lot of times council members were not there at that specific time that we see employees do that second effort. It meant a lot to me. And he's also been part of the farmers market committee, he's also part of the farmers market. But I just want to recognize Bill Aldrich, he was out there and he was looking around and ma, making sure things were okay. And I actually had to chase him down because he was busy doing what he considered what he needed to do, which is great. And I just want to recognize that.
Apparently it was followed, too.
It was, it was. Also out of the Central Business Advisor Committee, which is something that we're going to take on, recognizing our landowners downtown, you do improvements to their buildings, but I'm sure Barry would never mention it. But our town manager, I found out in one of our meetings, I think it was last week, that he actually, the vision, what's the name of the?
Invision.
Invision. They had done some improvements to the, their facade outside and Barry actually went down, stopped in. So that, that led us to a great epiphany of giving awards out per year, sort of like the regional commission does for their citizens of the, of the year and contributors to the commission. So, but I do want to point out, Barry did that. I mean, that, that was a big deal to me.
Bill drove me down there. Bill Aldrich drove me down there.
Okay. So now we, now we know, but you did, you did make a point of going down there and I think that means a lot. Okay, two more things, Mayor, and I'll be going. We heard people get up and talk about safety of students this week. This sort of hit home to me. I have a high schooler, a Christiansburg High School. And yesterday, my wife called me, my son tweaked his back, school called, my wife took up some ibuprofen, wanted to check him out. She had some planning periods from Blacksburg High, drove over. And she noticed there was, I wouldn't say mass hysteria, but there were, there were concerns up there. Kids beginning to check out of school and we, of course, left our son. And, and you heard, I think, one of the, our citizen comments tonight talk about our, our, our police. And I know a few police officers, my wife does too. I know there were several officers up there, but I knew we have a resource officer there in the town of Christiansburg. And for me personally, when I found out there was additional officers up there, Officer Townley specifically, I had no worries. Because my wife had just left, she was sort of worried about it. Should I go back? Should I check him out? I'm worried. I was like, well, who's there? You know, I, I know the resource officer there, was there already. I felt very confident in our resource officer being there. And then she, of course, mentioned the other officers there and I was like, just head on back home. I had no worries at all. Our, our force is very competent and will take care of business if needed to. So I just wanted to mention that. The last thing I have is the, the bridge walk, the eight-mile walk, which I participated in. I know Mr. Hubbard did. I don't know if.
But now, Mr. Showalter, I mean, I ran, I walked it in nine hours or something like that. But Mr. Showalter, he ran the entire thing, which I was very impressed with really, you know? And I was sure the rescue squad would be coming out at any minute.
As would I.
He is here tonight as proof.
But it helped me out putting this on the record so my doctor knows I had a physical last week. He wanted to make sure I was exercising, so I had my witness there. But I want to say the event was incredible. I, of course, ran it, but I went up and got my packet. It was put together very well. Smiles that early in the morning, walking that long. And my run, ongoing joke the whole week, which I know the whole point was to walk the Huckleberry was, I never knew a fun run that was over two miles. Okay? This was a, or a fun walk. This was an eight-miler. But there were smiles, it was handled professionally. Barry got to tell the staff and especially the rack center, I mean, it was great. I walked up, I got my packet and, and just seeing everybody who was participating in this, it was, for that early in the morning, that long of a walk, I was, I was really pleased with what I saw. And Blacksburg Transit had their bus there, it was really neat and it was for a great cause. You know, this is something that means a lot to our community that ran the Knolls Bridge. And of course, you know, as we, those of you attended the dedication who have been up on the bridge, there's also Steve in memory of his wife Janice. There's a, there's a great bench up there with an incredible view. But I'd just like to thank him as well. But it was just, it was a great week last week. And I actually got to run eight miles, which I haven't done in a long time, probably won't do for a long time.
Well, I appreciate you running 1.3 miles to reach about seven.
You know, my add there, there were over 70 walkers really and, and of course, one runner. But, and I think.
It's always nice to do.
The fact that I think we're not doing it, I'm making it an annual event, so you might want to keep, on touch, probably be the third week in September or something. I know Mr. Helms is sorry that he was out of town for it, but he's.
Mr. Showalter, anything else?
That is it.
Mr. Stipes?
Two items. First of all, I'd like to apologize to town council for not being at the bridge dedication or the, the walk, which I was intending to do both. My father's only brother passed away, my Uncle Bob, who's a Korean War veteran and a very special man to me, but it would, it would take something like that to keep me from this event. And I, with, with the apology, I'd also like to also thank town council profoundly, members that are sitting here now and also before. All of us are sitting at this table because something moves us, stirs us to get involved. And Huckleberry Trail was it for me. I know, I know why Councilman Hall is sitting here, but there's something that tips us into service. And the Huckleberry Trail is a fire that burns deep and council has been supportive entirely down the line. And I appreciate that because none of us does anything, you know, we do it as a team. And I appreciate, appreciate, you know, everything we've been able to do together on that. The second item, I've been approached by a citizen, Romania, it's not, I won't name the name, but that was requested, she, she is actually a employee at Corporate Resource Center. And she had an idea that I've also run by Dr. Meredith, the president of CRC, for the town to consider some sort of a participation discount at the Aquatic Center for CRC employees. I, too, am a CRC employee, but what I will attest to is there are almost 3,000 employees out there. A lot of them are the, the flat-belly Gen Xers and Gen Yers out there that are very active. And being that the CRC is in Blacksburg, I think, I think it's worthwhile, and I have spoken with Councilman Van Hoosier about this because he is our liaison to the Aquatic Center Committee, but I'd like the Aquatic Center Committee to at least discuss this, the possibility of some incentive for Corporate Resource Center employees that may increase our activity at the Aquatic Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Van Hoosier, I assume you'll, will report on that at least for, for trial runs, who's out there?
I'll try to bring you up at the next meeting, which should be the first one. Let me make one comment.
Okay.
Mr. Hubbard, I'm gonna have to really look at your suggestions to me in the future real close. If you try to get me going on that walk and you said three hours, now I hear you say you take nine hours to do it.
I wasn't exaggerating a little. I tried to make Henry look good.
That was Steve's topic. Mayor, there's something I've forgotten to mention on mine if I may.
Oh, oh, mate.
I'm sorry. I heard, Pastor brought up earlier today, bad press, and he's right. We've had some negative press, but I also think we've got some good press too that I want to point out. I don't know if Terry Caldwell's still here or not, but I'd love to see the fact that our fire department, police department, Chief Sisson, his group had to get out to block the roads for the little kids. The second graders all were going across, I guess they were, they were going to the aquatic center, they also went to the fire department. And we had, they were just involved in the community. I know that Terry Caldwell had the second graders learning all how to swim here from Christiansburg. I think that's a, I think that's exactly what we had kind of talked about, was getting, again, the, the community involved in a project such as that. But again, and I just, I think that's a wonderful thing. Obviously, they were going and touring the fire department as well, and I know that the little kids enjoy that from the primary school. But I, I really appreciate the way that our, this, these are town things that are getting, that are, that are meshing with the, with the county schools. In addition, Mr. Mayor, Barry Helms was kind enough, I spoke with him two weeks ago, there was an issue brought up to me from the Villas of Peppers Ferry about a noise issue involving the topsoil removal at all hours. I spoke with Barry, Barry then spoke with the, the individual who I think agreed that he was doing it at times which would violate our noise ordinance. It was brought up by some members of the Villas of Peppers Ferry and that's been taken care of. I forgot to mention that and I appreciate Mr. Helms, you doing that for the citizens. Thank you.
He's gone move, he's moving his operation further away from the village.
Right. And I appreciate you checking on that for us and I was able to pass that back along.
Very good.
Thank you.
Guys, is it my turn yet? A couple of things to mention, Barry, if I'm stealing into your thunder, good. I'll just, another one. Food Truck Rodeo Friday night downtown, five to 10. The event's sponsored by Downtown DCI Incorporated. They're, three, this is their fourth edition of it. Great time, great food. Would encourage all of you to come out and, as a reminder to council that it's there. October the 17th, I have received a letter from Christiansburg Institute, a part of that group invited me to the Cooking Around the World. Food that they've had, I'm not sure, I, I will double check if I ought to let you know or, Rock, Rock's where is it? Is it at the, is it gonna be at the?
Rock Center? Rock Center.
At the Rock Center?
Yeah.
Okay. I will get that reminder out to council. Also, October 17th, and we will meet once more prior to this, I think, but October the 17th is the Fall Festival at Your Valley Mall in the South parking lot. Our police department has, Fire and Rescue has put this out several, for several years. They are including, as I said earlier in the meeting, they are including Help Save the Next Girl local chapter to even continue to raise awareness as to their cause. And Barry sent me, I got a letter, Barry got a letter about a voting representative at the Virginia Municipal League Conference on Tuesday the sixth, hold on. Tuesday the, uh.
The sixth.
The sixth, at, at the business meetings. And it says if the mayor or board chairman is not going to be present, that we need to at least have an alternate. So I'm, my understanding at this point is I will be there, but those plans may change on some, some transportation and personal issues. But is there a, anyone going to, those that are going to go and stay for the annual conference, annual banquet? Some others may be leaving early, but we need to appoint a, an, an alternate to vote in my stead if I'm not there. So who's gonna be there?
I'm gonna, well, I, I don't know if you are gonna be. My plan right now, my wife and I have childcare and we're gonna take our time coming back. So we'll be there on Tuesday. So we're gonna, my plan is to be there for the entire thing this time.
Okay. So you'll be there that afternoon?
I will be, yes.
Well, as vice mayor, Mr. Hall, would you like to have?
Well, I mean, it is, it's up to you. And I'll take that if no one else wants that, but I'll be willing to serve.
The business meeting portion of it starts about 2:30 and it runs till about 3:30 or four. Is that, I'm somewhere in that general vicinity. And if I, if I'm not there, Mr. Hall, I'll.
It'd be my pleasure. It'd be my pleasure.
Very good.
Yes.
That's all I have.
A little further up there on political signs, paying part of sound letters to all the candidates to remind them to get their signs out of the right of way. The signs have been removed from the lots that we purchased. Some of the signs were up when we purchased them and I was basically considering grandfather, but kept having issues, so they're all gone now. The lot on North Franklin Street next to the Waffle House is the one that had the most signs on it. So Nicole and her staff are working hard to keep, people in compliance and most everybody's, I think we had taken one down. It's obviously been taken down. Everybody's moving on cooperating ones. And talk about the voting number. Phil report, the next phase of Huckleberry Trail, we still have advertisers, we're still waiting on VDOT's final approval.
How long's the, how long have they been sitting on that date?
At least a month.
Okay, is that the phase two E, the one that's come back from the lines yet?
Yes.
I thought, but that was supposed to go out for advertisement back in April and May?
Well, it was, I thought we were ready. Didn't get it out then, but the, the environmental had been done again because we've been, over past their time on it.
Okay.
We're about to do that again, we're seeing that.
Thanks, just, I appreciate that date and I was, I told people that we were gonna, that they were gonna see the trail there late summer.
You just didn't tell them which late summer, did you?
No, you. I fooled you.
Today's about late summers again.
Thanks, Mr. Helms.
That's awesome.
That it? Appreciate everyone coming out tonight, expressing your concerns and your interests. I will assure you that we did not go on deaf ears, that we are aware of the situation and are working with a number of staff and legal advice here within the town to determine what our needs are, what we need to do. But, but as, as you all know, it is a county issue, it is on private property until it spills over. So from, from the decisions by the school, we have no, nothing to do with changing that decision if it's ever going to be done. But if anything happens, I am been assured by Mr. Sisson, it will be there. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Do I have that second?
Second.
Thank you.
So granted.